So it is two oh one P M and I'm calling the uh student success and technology subcommittee meeting to order. On June twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. I'm just because it's a Zoom meeting um. We have Joe Spasato, um myself, Jessica Deckley Alberti, Beth Vancini and Al Canham. In the meeting and then have a guest, she's a pocket. So we will find an American flag wherever we are and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance. I can also imagine it beyond our walls where it is too. Um, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Even though silly, I'm sorry.
With everything going on in our world right now, if we should be standing more for the pledge than ever, right? So it's great. Thank you.
Go Constitution. All right, um, Joe, you are first on the business items if you would like to just head right into it.
Sure, no problem. So over the past. Few months, we've kind of been talking about different ideas on how we can add layers. Of safety and security for our students, faculty and staff here within the district. Um, one of the ways that we've done that is we use currently, we use a program called Block C. It allows for content filtering and and supervision through our firewall. It adds blockades in addition. Um, we also brought on board Bark a- as we've talked about several times. Um, one of the big things moving that was brought to my attention is we wanted to look at. Programs such as like Hapara or Go Guardian. Or or something along those lines which would allow our teachers. A another avenue to monitor what our students are doing in school. Um, with that being said, I've reached out to a company that I've dealt with in the past. Uh, their name is Securely and uh I worked with them to develop a um onboarding process. Or uh first year quote that would bring Securely into our district. In addition to using Bark uh uh an additional layer. Um, what this would do is it would allow us to one for grades three through twelve. Any student using a school issued device or that's logged into Chrome, um the Chrome. Browser using their school login, it would allow the teachers the opportunity to see. Those screens and monitor and to c- control the web browsers, lock screens or or lock browsers, close. Uh tabs down that shouldn't be open, any distracting material. The teachers would be able to do that from their workstation. Um, obviously, an application like that would require some professional development, which we would work with the teachers in house to provide that. I was, my thought process was bring that on board for a year. Provide the professional development and see if it's being utilized. If it's something that's not really utilized. It's one year down, we don't have to continue it. It's it's only part of the licensing. Um, the other things that we were bringing on board were Securely Home. Which will allow families and parents an opportunity to uh set up their own parameters at home. Outside the school hours, what Securely allows you to do is I can create. Um, time constraints, so we can have a strict lockdown during school hours or up to a certain time. And then it could open it, open up some of these blockades outside of that, or it can continue around the clock. Um, the big thing is is that it'll allow parents to create attached accounts to their child. And they would be able to kind of monitor. Visually monitor what's going on with their with their child. They can see what they got on um. And then working with the school, we'd be able to manipulate things like that. Um, it does allow for what they call a penalty box. So if a student violates. Some of these policies and procedures that are in place, it automatically will move them to a pen- a penalty box where it it overly restricts. What they have access to. So they would basically only have access to anything Google related and that would be all. Um, they would be able to search. In addition to that, Securely awful also offers an A I um controller. So while the students were logged into their Google account on Chrome or or anything that's related. And they're signed in and and on a monitored system. This A I um controller would direct everything into Securely A I. So if they typed Chat G P T. And tried to go to judge Chat G P T, it would bring him to Securely's A I. And with that, the Securely's A I would then filter everything that they're looking for and then rather than. This was the example that was given to us. So if a student was looking for, say, a paragraph to on. The American Revolution, rather than give them the paragraph, it would give them. Um, opportunity to go to specific locations to gather that research. Rather than give them that, it would just di- direct them to where they could find the resources so that they would be able to do that. Um, and that was the fe- one of the features that was built in. So I thought that bringing this on board would make it a little bit easier. For us to manage everything. Everything would be user based rather than device based. So if a student logged into their Chromebook at home using their school email, our filters would go with it. Um, and then it just goes a little bit beyond what Bark offers. Um, the free version of Bark, I should say. If we had a a paid version of Bark, it would it would essentially do that. I just wanted to um.
You have cost of those?
I do, I do. And I was just about to share my screen and show you what I have.
That's what you'd emailed. I'm curious, like I I think the control on the jet Chat G P T sounds awesome. Um, I think. There are times that maybe you would want to do it to see like what. Chat G P T would spit out in terms of like it's not accurate or or that. So would the teachers. Be able to do Chat G P T at least on their computers to show what it would show or like is there a way to put that on and off within a cloud?
So as we were talking about, this is a hundred percent user driven. So this will link with our Google admin console and as inside our admin console, we have what we call organizational units. And these organizational units are separated Central Office, Tohoto, uh Berlin and Boylston. Inside that, then we break it down even further. We have. Paraprofessionals, teachers, admin, we have uh what current the year of graduation for each student. So it gets broken down and depending upon. How we create these filters within Securely, we can apply them to certain. Units, organizational units. So for instance, the teachers wouldn't necessarily have the same constraints that the students would have and then. Seniors wouldn't have the same restrictions as sixth graders, right? Because the material that they are exposed to changes. For instance, if you're if you're talking about prohibition, they're gonna talk about prohibition a little bit differently. At the high school level than they would in the middle school level. So the exposure of material, the restrictions would have to be. Uh, determined upon grade level and that we can control it that far down. So as you can see on the screen, this is a copy of the quote that was sent to me by Securely. It is eight thousand five hundred dollars. And this would run from July one until July thirty first of the following year. The first couple of months, it would run concurrently with our current subscription to Block C. But they discounted the price a little bit to offset that. They were they're very good to me. Realistically, it's about ten dollars and fifty cents a student for the whole package. I say that because if I do it in comparison to what Block C quoted me out at. It is roughly the same price. However, Securely offers a little bit more. Um, so the 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 cost is about the same as what it would cost if we stayed with Block C and made these changes. However, Securely is a little bit more defined for Google like we are. And they offer a little bit more for the same price. So I was I was very happy with that. I did share all of the information about the different um elements that were provided. By Securely in the email that I shared with all of you. Um, I can make that information available to anybody else as well. I mean, you can get the information straight from either YouTube or or Securely's website as well. Um, I just thought what they were offering and the usability behind it on the back end. For my department um would be beneficial. Uh, there will there will be a learning curve for some of the faculty using it, um if especially if they wanted to use that monitoring platform that was built in. The Securely uh classroom feature, which would allow them to control the tabs or lock down browsers and all of that stuff. But um I really think that at least for a year, uh it it's worth it to see if this is the direction. Um, that we were all looking for. Uh, so I mean, I I think this application encompasses everything that this committee was looking for. That the school committee was looking for and what our parents, especially at our elementary school level, were looking for.
Everything you said is very exciting to hear as a parent and also on the school committee. Um, I know that I talked to a teacher that works in Clinton and they use Hapara, but it was mainly like for the function of. Being able to lock the screens in which browsers and monitor the the computers in the classroom. And she really spoke highly of the ability to do that. So um hopefully our teachers would be able to. Feel similarly, but you know, obviously there's a learning curve to that. Um. I love the parent control like cuz my kid's stuff shuts off at nine, but her Chromebook doesn't, so that um. Would be nice uh to have control over that. Um, and you know, I know a lot of people are big on parental controls and and decision making. So that again puts, you know, it in their hands for when it's at home. I'm curious if that also would. Um, take care of the parent emailing the child dilemma that we have.
So this has nothing to do with that. That is a hundred percent separate. And that's another discussion I was gonna have today. Do you and we can, let's just table that for a moment. Let's finish this. And then I can answer any questions you have on how we can move forward with something like that. Does anybody have any other questions on this Securely application that we're we're gonna roll out?
I think it's great. I think that especially if depending on whether we move forward with cell phones or the state does, you're gonna need something. Your like it's gonna, all that's gonna shift to the Chromebook and I think it's good to get a jump start on locking down the Chromebooks. Um, I'd be interested to hear what the teacher, how the teachers feel about monitoring the screens, whether that. I could see it going either way, whether they think it's more work. To be policing that or if they like the idea of it, that they don't have to like try and catch them. I just, I would be interested to hear their feedback, but I think a year of trying it out and seeing if it's being used or not is a great idea.
And I think I'm I'm right with you, Beth, right? So Joe, and first of all, I didn't, I apologize, Joe, you did send me that quote. This will be a big shift for our teachers, right? Let's be really clear about this, right? Our admin, I think you've heard say at school committee meetings, the Bark thing has been a big thing for them, right? Once you get alerted to stuff, you have to fall through with it. Um, and it's occupying a lot of their times. So a lot of their time, so. This will be a lot for our teachers and how they handle it and make sure when something does pop up. That they're gonna have to be being very close attention to all of this. But we have to do some professional learning with our teachers, Joe, with this for them to really, to really grasp this cuz I don't think they have. An idea besides this, if they're tuning into our meetings besides Jason, that this is on the horizon for them. Unless they're really paying close attention at our school committee meetings.
And and even moving forward, we could, you know, after if after rolling this out, it could be determined that the middle and high school or. Nine through twelve really doesn't need this, right? The the kids are responsible enough for themselves to take ownership in their work and all of that stuff. So we we could even reduce it down further than that. So for instance, if if this is something that just say. Grades three through six would wanna utilize, then we just get those amount of licenses and it's implemented for those grades. And and that's how much of a fine tooth comb I can control this. So. Um, we don't, it doesn't necessarily have to be district wide. We can control it down to. Uh, a small amount of grades and you know, just for for training or I don't wanna say for training, but. Just so the kids understand that we have that capability to to do this. So make sure you're on task. Make sure you're staying focused on your work.
We could, we could do what's called like model grades, right? So you model it and so so like a gradual release of this taking place. Um, so we can see it. And again, that would be a conversation we have to have with with. Administration and with school committee and seeing the best way that to to roll this out. But I sometimes feel when you roll something this big all at once, that might be hard for us to manage and navigate for amongst our staff. And maybe is it something we just do at the elementary level, see how that works there and then. You know, maybe December, roll out the middle school and the high school like all in one year, but just gradual. So we can monitor on our end to make sure we're doing. What's happening and popping up and making it's ma- being brought to our attention. Just something to think about.
Absolutely. I mean, the.
Go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say the deployment, we can, we can deploy it any way we see fit, right? Because we can, it's something that, again, we control with a fine tooth comb. So I can turn it off and on as we're going through it. It could be on for everyone and then we just provide professional development to the elementary school at the start of the year. You have this capability. This is how you access it. This is what you do. I mean, you don't have to use it. We're we're not forcing this on you. We just wanna make you aware that you have this ability if you need it, right? One of the conversations that we've heard at school committee was, are we on the computers too much to begin with, right? So are we using the the Chromebooks too much? So even if we start to move away from that. We still have this ability for when we use use it and we can turn it off and on.
Does it monitor screen time as well?
It will monitor, it it can monitor screen time as well, yes.
That's awesome. Um, I guess just one thing about Al about. You know, intermittently releasing it grade wise. I feel like if that was mid-year, that maybe makes sense, but I. I guess I would be concerned if we didn't start the new school year, kind of like say, this is a new program we have. These are expectations, you know, maybe do the technology sign off in a different way where it really forces the kids. To actually sign off on reading it. Um, because right now it's just the parents checking the boxes and saying, yes, the kid read it and. And honestly, the the way to access those agreements, it takes you out of that box. It takes you out of that process to so. So I said, okay, well, I wrote down, I need to look up this, I need to look for this. Yes, my kid agrees to it and then I like go and read it all to my kid. But that's a very cumbersome process that not all parents are gonna do. So I guess. You know, maybe a soft launch of it, like if we have overlap with Bark and we get the Securely that do more of a soft launch. And and again, show them the capabilities, but it's not a requirement, certainly. So I don't know, just throwing a different perspective out there.
Understood.
And I am completely looking at it from the admin side and our teacher side, so please appreciate that. Like, I I went finished through negotiations and. And and as we'll know in our next meeting, like adding and adding and adding to them. So I just wanna be like, we would have to really. You know, vet this out first, you know, if this is what we're doing as a district, all on board. Um, I think it's, by the way, I support it a hundred percent, just know that. But it it's like. To put an initiative like this across the entire district, we just have this process we have to go through. School committee, admin, union, then roll that professional learning out calendar, like when you're gonna train these people on that. Cuz we already have a professional learning lined up already for the first couple of days and where we're gonna fit that in. And if we are gonna do this this year. Uh, we're gonna go all in and make sure we do this the right way. That and um, yeah, I think it's 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 good stuff, just rolling it out and the best way to do it.
I guess my hope would be it'd be less work for teachers and admin. Um, I don't know, like Bark has a. A I is not perfect for sure. I have it, you know, on my kid's phone. Um, so I wonder if. Right, my hope is that Securely's A I blocking it, it blocks it in real time. And you hopefully less requirement of of teachers or admin to review that? I don't know.
Bark has nothing to do with our teachers, just know that. And I'm speaking out of my lane, this is Joe, right? Bark only goes to our admin team, right? So our teachers don't really have that that alerts that go on. So this is different for our teachers.
Um, just. Well, the the only part of this application that would be an additional tool for teachers would be the Securely classroom. Um, that's the only part that would be passed upon teachers, right? And it is to the point where teachers would only use it if they need it, right? It's not something that I I'm a big proponent of providing technology, providing. Um, professional development, but not forcing it. Uh, I know coming from the classroom that anytime technology was thrown at me and I didn't. Believe that it would, or if I had to modify the things that I'm currently doing. In a crazy way in order to incorporate this technology, I wasn't gonna use it, right? There there's. As a teacher, you have your your routines and whether it's prepping for a class or getting to that next topic. Um, anything outside of your 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 comfort zone and your routine, i- it's very difficult to adapt from that, especially if you've been doing this a long time. So I I appreciate what Al's saying and I I understand as well that. I can't just throw this at people and say, hey, you gotta use it, um, because they never will. Uh, it it's something that they have to um take a look at. They have to be able to put their hands on it and and and. Uh, get a feel for it before it's it's even, before they even think about using it, right? Um, and and that's something that I appreciate and and I understand as well. So um. Leading up to it, I would provide teachers with informational videos. Hey, just check this out. Um, and then I could hold uh uh like a professional development. That's a hundred percent optional. Hey, I'm gonna demonstrate this. Come check it out if you want. Um, and and I appreciate teachers have their time and you know, what what is obligated of them. Both during school and after school and what's not obligated for them. Um, and I I'm just gonna try to provide them with as much information as possible so. They can have a appreciation of what we're trying to do and then if it's something that they wanted to experience, then. Take it to that next step. I so um, something like this, this Securely classroom. I would gingerly uh provide the teachers with this information and let them know that it's just an additional tool for them. And um, it's something that might help support what they're trying to do in the classroom.
So at the end of the day, it's still a, it's still the the student's responsibility to use a technology correctly. If the the teacher chooses to do the extra level of monitoring because it's disruptive. To their class and they are trying to crack down on it, but we're not having the expectation that the teacher is. Using it and monitoring it and disciplining based on that. So if a parent were to call and say, why is my kid watching Netflix? When they're supposed to be working, it's a student's responsibility. It, we're not gonna go after the teacher and be like, well, you could have seen. Right? That's, it's their option if they want to use this resource.
At at this particular moment, that is my understanding of how it would be rolled out this first year. If it's something that the district is like. This is a great tool, this helps hinder distractions, distracted behaviors. Then that would be something that would have to come come down from essentially above me to make that decision. But the I'm only, my goal was to provide a tool that would allow teachers to help mitigate some of their. Their distracting behaviors with technology.
So so Joe, just pause. I bet I agree what we are saying on that. If we could just pause for a second, I agree with that. I'm just. I don't know if I necessarily think that I, maybe there is accountability on our teachers to be watching and overseeing that as well too, right? Um, I I would have, we've had a couple of instances this this year where like there there is an accountability on our teachers and now. They have the ability to make sure they're monitoring some of the stuff that's going on in those classrooms. You know, when when we sit with our, talk about kids with screen time, you know, a lot of times the teachers, the kids have their screens up and not necessarily seeing in it. Everything that's going on. Like I was just at the new Darty High School where the teachers have a station. And they are literally looking at, they can pop into the kids' computers and see exactly what they're doing at all times. And the accountability is on those teachers to monitoring that and making sure if they're supposed to be watching a video of the revolutionary one and making this up. And the teacher checks on them from their desk, they and the kid's doing something else. I would expect that teacher to be held accountable and making sure that doesn't. So I I I just want us to make sure what we think about that. Just something to think about.
But when we're rolling it out, I imagine like I I just, I don't want teachers to be hesitant to even agree to use it. Because they don't want it to all get thrown on them when it's like, it would be like steps where it's like, this is a tool right now. And then maybe next year, there's higher expectations over how you're using the information.
Because Securely, it it's the same as uh Block C, but it offers the additional parental controls. And then also this live monitoring in the classroom, correct? So it's the same price, but it has these options to add on from what.
So it's going to bring in that that um, that classroom monitoring, like that Gold Guardian that's out there, like that Hapara. That you you had mentioned. Um, and there there's a few other applications out there that different school districts use. Um, it it allows for that like like Al brought up, um, for the teachers to bring up a separate screen on their workstation. And they can literally see what the kids are on, right? So they can see um. It also allows the teacher to broadcast. A tab out, so. The teacher could say, I want everyone on this screen and broadcast it out to their class and everyone's screen would change to that. So there's an immense amount of ability with this program and application and I and I totally agree with with Al. We have to be careful on how it is. Rolled out, right? We we don't want, um, we just wanna make sure that we're we're rolling it out properly. And 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 like Beth said, you know, year one is trial. Hey, this is a tool that we have. Start utilizing it, put your hands on it. Raise any questions that you have, um, get the training, additional training that you may or may not need. And then year two, you know, our expectation is that, you know, you're gonna be monitoring or you're gonna be controlling. These 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 screens or uh you're gonna be checking in periodically with with your class. To make sure that they they're on task, right?
So so Joe, the other, the other part is is that they're less of a cost. I'm just looking at the calendar. I'm really not looking away from the screen. Of a cost if we don't implement the whole thing at the very beginning of the year, all inclusive, like cuz it looks like to me that. That's all in this this quote you have here. If we were to gradual release our, you know, like to put what's Beth saying. This is the expectation, we'll roll it out a little at a time, you know, sprinkle it out. Is there a difference in cost? Because the other part, ladies and gentlemen, is is do we have this budget anywhere? Is this anywhere that we have put this in? Um, as a district for this cuz it is a good chunk of change. So I just wanna make sure we're keeping an eye on that as well.
Yeah, so in relation to what Block C is, what we're currently playing, paying for Block C. It's a couple thousand dollars more. Um, than what I already had budgeted in.
Okay, good.
This this had come in, the the conversations for this had uh started after. The the Block C line item was built into the budget of next year for for operating expenses. So I would have to find this money within my technology budget for the district. The the additional cost, so something would have to would have to suffer somewhere else. Um, as far as reduction in in what we're paying for, um, they. We're essentially already only paying a prorated amount anyway, uh because they reduced the the cost. As far as what it would be, the overlap with Block C. So technically, right now, we're we're saving about twenty five hundred dollars anyway off what the yearly cost would be. Because they prorated it for me. Because they prorated it for me for the dou- the doubling. Um, I can go back to them and, and see if we could reduce the, the number of licenses for the, for the securely classroom. Right now that eight thirty-seven represents three through twelve. Now we may not need it three through twelve and I can look at what the district numbers are and see if I can cut it down and just do three to eight and, and leave the high school out and, and see if, what they'll do. Um, so I, I can definitely talk to them about that.
And, and the only other part, whi- which we, we should be really proud as a district, we have our professional learning calendar all rolled out um, for those first couple of days. Um, we're not piecemealing it at all this year. But, and I should know this and I'm so sorry, like the first professional, full professional learning day, is that in, in October or Sep- Sep- September? Anyone have the calendar? Joe, do you have the calendar right there by any chance?
Uh, I don't have it on my wall yet. Um.
Hold on, I'm gonna check. I think I have it. Sorry. I do. So I'm really looking at like that first professional learning day, not those first two days.
September twenty-sixth?
Number twenty-sixth. If that would be, like, again, I think we're all agreeing, you just gotta roll this out the right way, right? And that would be the focus of that. Right? I imagine like groups of whether it be elementary, middle school, high school, traveling to, and I'm just free wheeling here, right? Traveling to the auditorium where Joe's there and just does a presentation and really everyone, it's almost like a round robin type of thing that people would experience and be it really roll this out the right way with the expectation, eh, expectation that you, you know, you're gonna use this. Uh, just, I'm just thinking right now, looking at dates.
Yeah, I mean, i- if, if that's the case, by, my plan was to just start providing teachers with information on all of this, right? So if I provide them with short little videos and information on these programs and applications that we're install that we're implementing that they understand. And then if we had a date, say September twenty-sixth, um, provided and you're like, Joe, you have forty-five minutes with each school. Then I would tailor a presentation for each school for a forty-five minute window and say, okay. Uh, additionally with me providing this information to all our faculty and staff and admin, I would say professional development to come on September twenty-sixth.
And then as soon as that would happen, right? You'd have to roll this out to parents, right? So there has to be some event where and, and I, I have my hat on as a, as a previous curriculum director, the best way to roll this stuff out, right? But after rolling out to our admin and our, and our print, uh, teachers, then making sure that parents have the understanding of what this is entailing for them as well too, because money's, it, it, it's great, the cost. But we wanna make sure we're using it fully and properly as well too, and people are using it. And school, I'm way talking too much about this, but this is just my thoughts on how to get the biggest rollout of this as well.
And I would have no problem doing a webinar on a Monday or Tuesday night following that first develop, professional development for families. Um, and just broadcast the training to, to everyone.
Yeah, cause they're, uh, cause I'm just trying to look like the celebration of learning or parent conferences, that's November. Yeah, that's pretty late. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I, if, if, if that was our plan and I said, okay, I did the professional development with the teachers on the twenty-sixth. And then that following week, I did an informational night for families, let's say October one. And I, and I broadcasted a webinar and anybody could join if they wanted to and I recorded it. Um, and I, and I did a demonstration for families about what securely home was and all of that and what securely aware does. And all these features that we now have the capability to do. I could record that and then we could memorialize it on the website and, and people could go to it after the fact that they couldn't join that first night. So everyone within that week of the twenty-sixth through um, October third, then we would be able to potentially over the course of a week, bring everyone to the same point.
When, when does Blocksi expire, the contract?
The contract with Blocksi expires in October, I believe. Hold on, let me just double check.
In, in this way, Beth and Jessica, you can get this in front of school committee in August, right? Roll this out in September to our, 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 well, roll it out in the very beginning to our staff. Like we can, we can really come up with a timeline, the best way to roll this out. So it's gonna be fully implemented and used properly, right? We just don't wanna have another thing we're bringing to our district, like as we're trying to clean that up now that we have and we're paying for and not using it. So we just wanna make sure we're doing this the right way.
It, it would be great. So I mean, ideally, I would love it for the beginning of the school year, um, but you know, it'd be nice i- if we didn't, like if we had to go for the September twenty-sixth PD day and, and October, like webinar for parents. It would be nice to be like coming soon or whatever in the back to school stuff, letters.
Well, don't get me wrong. I'm sorry to interrupt, but it, it will be implemented for the start of the school year. It will be up and running for the start of the school year. That it's just the additional training for our faculty and staff and families would come later on, but the, the, the monitoring and all of that information would be up, already up and running. So we'd already be collecting the data. Um, we'd, we'd already have the filters in place. Um, the, the blocks at home would mirror the blocks in school. Um, so all of that would already be in place for the start of the school year. It would, it would just be the, the training or the professional development for families and for faculty and staff wouldn't happen until later on, but it would already be in place.
Be a, a soft opening, right? For like what they, the terminology they use, just slowly have it there and just slowly roll it out.
Yep, so the, the, the whole thing is that teachers wouldn't know the difference, right? Teachers wouldn't know the difference, students wouldn't know the difference. The, the screen that you get when you hit a blocked website would be different, right? That would be different, but other than that, everything else would still feel the same. Um, all the monitoring would still be in place. We'd have it set up. So if a kid triggers a warning, it would still go to the right people, whether it's the guidance counselor, the school clinician or the assistant principals or however we have it set up, that would all be in place, just like it currently is now. Um, the big change that would be coming would be this classroom feature, right? And it's not really a change, it's just an additional tool for our teachers to use. Um, so that, that would be the biggest change. Everything else, although it, it would appear to be different, would still have the same, um, the same finish line, right? It would, it would just look different.
I'm curious, does, does securely probably have some of those user videos already made for like for parents and teachers? So we could we could have that, like if you wanna explore more before our sessions on, you know, September and October, you can click on here and learn more.
Yeah, no, I, I, I believe I've already shared them kinda with all of you, just like that, those informational videos on, on what it does. And they do have additional ones and I could definitely build a, a reference sheet for it, for, for people to go in and click and, and all of that. Okay.
Beth, any thoughts?
No, Beth, I agree.
Exciting. You know, and I hope for those who wanna use it, a, a useful tool too. I know the teacher, I know in Clinton liked it, so. Um, certainly our intent is not to, to torture teachers with new technology, so.
And you, you know what we need? We, we had events this year that we needed to have, be, 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 be made aware of, of what was taking place. Um, and it's just, these kids are getting smarter and smarter on how, how to use this technology and how to get around some things. Um, which good to, for them, but not really good for them.
Frontal lobe hasn't caught up to that.
Really need to be careful. You're seeing it all the time throughout the entire state and the mighty entire country, some of the stuff that's happening. Um, so this is our, our safeguard for our kids. Beth, I, I know, sorry, Beth. Jess, I know this is your meeting. Um, Jason, if you wanted to ask Jason if he had the input, cause Jason's really been actively, we've had multiple conversations with Jason. Jason, any feedback at all?
Um, well, thanks for thinking of me. Um, I, I don't have a lot to add. I, I think y'all have pretty well covered it. I'll echo the sentiment. Um, that as a parent being able to control Chromebook at home is um, very interesting to me. We, we tried to do a little bit of that with just our home network, you know, turn the wifi off at a certain time or whatever. Um, we use the built-in Apple parental controls um, on Apple devices we have at home, but obviously that doesn't work on a Chromebook. So being able to do some of that stuff with the Chromebook, you know, my, they can't get around our parental controls by using a school-controlled device because we can put in a time block or that kinda thing is very interesting. I'll, I'll echo that and agree with that. Otherwise, the, the other area of interest I had was gonna be later on the agenda regarding the, the being able to, you know, email parents back and forth and, you know, I, I had the email exchange with Al about that already, but you know, for the sake of the school community that maybe didn't see that email thread, but I can hold that comment since that was tabled until later.
Thanks, Jason. Sorry, sorry, Jess. I know this is your meeting. I apologize.
I love feedback. No, no apology needed. No, no.
Okay, so what are our next steps?
With securely?
Nope, not, not with you, Joe. Sorry. I'm sorry. I guess I'm just, your next step, school committee in terms of moving this forward. This is a subcommittee meeting, so I think the next step would be to get it on the, our agenda for in August for school committee?
Yeah, I mean, I think what August twenty, I'd have to bring up our calendar. I think August twenty-second is the first one, but I, there was a no, I bet it's later than that. It's the Tuesday before. Six, maybe?
Twenty-sixth. But August twelfth is, is, is a hold as well too, just in case we need it.
Okay, the new version didn't have that as needed twelfth on there. But I, so that's why I was questioning it. I mean, I, I feel like there's probably a few things that do need to be discussed. I guess my only concern is if, if we don't bring it up to the full committee until August twelfth, does that tie Joe's hands in terms of that July first?
That was the question I had. Do I need school committee's permission to go ahead and do this?
I really think this is just is if, is sort of knowledge, right? Bringing this to school committee. I'm looking at the lanes, you know, of school committee, you know, budget, policy. This, I'm, I'm not sure. This is all in the new technology. The money is really, we're, we're gonna work it out amongst ourselves, so we're not asking for any more money. So maybe it's just, um, you know, a conversation that's happening in, in, in the subcommittee and just bringing it forward for information because they gave you during this whole school committee meeting, like, yes, you should go pursue this. So I think it's just bringing back that knowledge and I'm not speaking for you, Beth or Jess, but I'm just sort of giving my thoughts on that.
Sharing thoughts are good. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, kind of my perspective, if you're not requesting more money and working within your current budget, then I I don't know if an official vote would be needed, but certainly sharing what you've.
Voting on really, it's more of a, just like a, an update that we would give at the first meeting of the school year, I would think.
I agree.
Perfect. I appreciate that.
Yeah, I mean, may, maybe a, an email from Al saying, you know, Joe has researched a bunch of different options and we're switching from Blocksi to securely that will give more parent, which will give the additional, you know, more parental controls at home and then also the ability to monitor in class, which you know, we'll do a soft, soft start and then do PD and, you know, apparent session on it too. I don't know.
This is just, I, I, I've got to couch this under that, we're just improving what we're doing already, right? So we're just stepping it up. We're not bringing something brand new and although might be a different company, but we're not bringing something completely different into it. We're stepping up our, our technology and our security, which we already should be doing anyways. And if I had to bring this every single time we did something like this in front of you, I don't, I think even Bark, I'm just trying to make sure we're not gonna get ourselves in trouble here, right? Bark, we sort of just told you we're doing this. We didn't really bring it to a vote for school committee and I think I didn't need to do that. Um, so I feel like we're, this could cover us underneath that same analogy. Correct me if you think I'm wrong, Jessica and Beth.
No, I mean, we've been requesting such things within full committee meetings, so I I, I personally, as myself, do not feel that that was inappropriate at all. So, you know, you have to do your job between our monthly meetings, so.
Good with that too, Beth?
Yeah.
Good. So if, if I'm hearing everyone correctly, Joe, we're gonna, we'll talk of this after this and I wanna be mindful of our time, is our meeting at three thirty? I know we got a couple of other things on this agenda that we really gotta get to. So Joe, we're gonna talk after this is done and just sort of move forward in our next steps and roll out the professional learning. And that means talking to principals, talking to our admin, talking to the union and just rolling this all up between now and August. Uh, start of school.
Before we move on, so if this contract starts July first, if that's the window that they gave you, I think very many parents would be excited to hear about these potential new home controls while these Chromebooks are at home over the summer. Um, so just throwing it out there that I, I think if if you put out those videos to parents, there might be quite a few people researching it on their own and maybe enacting those in July.
Absolutely. So I would honestly, if, you know, I would get everything up and running first. So parents probably won't hear about the rollout until maybe August. Um, once everything is in place, once everything's been tested, um, once we're, we've confirmed that everything's how we want it to be. Once I've talked to administration, um, you know, I, I wanna make sure that uh, our admin team is completely aware with everything before I start sharing it with, with families. So.
I'm getting overly eager. I'm sorry.
And this way then also, we can have a chance to have a conversation with the union as well too.
Totally. Um, and so I guess that kind of naturally goes into the home protections. I mean, you already sort of spoke to that. Um, but I was curious, like the, my daughter in sixth grade said, oh yeah, we're bringing them home over the summer. Um, which I frankly don't believe it happened in the past, but I didn't know cause usually things have to be upgraded or looked at. So I, I was curious, I was curious about that. I don't know.
So the, the devices were assigned to the students when they, when they enter sixth grade. Um, they, they get summer work. So my thought process behind this was, we, I, I wanna make sure that they have the ability to, to do their, their work, right? Whether their teachers are building out Google classrooms early or they have uh, reading and they have summer reading and they have to write reports on the book set or answer any questions like that. I wanted to make sure that the students had their ability to, to do their work with a, you know, we're providing these, these devices throughout the school year. What's the difference if I extended out over the course of the summer? Um, they're responsible to take care of these things. Um, so I wanted to make sure that our, our students had the ability to do that. Now, I know that my department's available during the summer, so God forbid something happens, we're able to rectify anything that takes place with these devices. It, it's not, they don't take them home and they didn't get the chance to take them home and then no longer get the support that they needed from the district because we're available. So.
You guys, excuse me for, I'm just working with the bus company, cause we're gonna have our bus routes out much earlier this year. And so people are, so I finally got him on the line, so I'm gonna step out for a second. I know you're in good hands to take this call, but I'll be back, okay?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah.
So with, that's being, that's the, the difference with the devices. There was no reason for us to do that, that the, they, the kids can update their devices on their own, or we can push them out. And we check their devices as they get closer to testing time to make sure that they're completely up to date. And then there, obviously there's one offs. If, for, if they fall too far behind with updates that certain programs and apps wouldn't work and then they just updated them then anyway. Uh, I know, I just wanted to, to kind of move this along. One of the big issues is the emailing, right? The emailing with families, especially parents with their students. I, I fallen both, I, I kind of walk the fence line with this. I walk, I, I walk the follow line. Um, I come, my, my kids come from a district where there is no communication with outside emails at any point. Um, and I believe that even follows them through high school. It, it's everything locked down to their, their domain only. Um, and tha- and that's how it's been and that's all my kids know. And it's very difficult sometimes to communicate. Um, but then again, uh, if I need to send them anything or uh, if I have to share information with them, I have Google Drive on my phone and I can log in as them and I can just share stuff that way. And then I just drop it right into their, into their Google Drive from my phone and then they have what they need. Um, but I, I understand where parents have, they've had this ability up until this year, right? There hasn't been that restriction and, and people have grown accustomed to it and they're comfortable with it and, um, And and people have grown accustomed to it, and they're comfortable with it, and um they're they're used to it, right? One of the big things that has been brought to light using our monitoring systems is that s- not all parents are I don't wanna say using it responsibly, because that would be I'd be misspeaking by saying that, but they're 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 removing the school functions that are already in place, so for instance, um there's been communications about from a kid to a parent, or from a parent to a kid about illnesses. Um, rather than the the student going to the nurse, the the student is going to their parent first, right, so the nurse is being mitigated from the situation. Or if there's issues with another classmate or uh, mental health issues, or 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 moments that a student would email the parent rather than going to the school guidance counselor or clinician, which we have in place to help these students mitigate these problems on their own, or or use the supports that are in place, so if those are I don't wanna say they're one offs, they happen. And, and that is something that has happened because our students have the ability to email outside. Now, I've also received emails from other parents where whether it's a a change in schedule, or it's a change in what the student is doing after school. That communication happens much, much easier if a student can quickly send an email to a parent and saying, hey, my game was canceled, I need you to pick me up instead, right, that that can happen. So there there are pros and cons, and there's positives to negatives to both sides of this. I will do what it is that I'm instructed to do. I only locked it down to help with ongoing issues with some safety and security issues that we had in place with some students emailing outside of the domain. Um, stuff that shouldn't been emailed outside the domain, now, um, I s- again, I will support whatever the decision is made. Uh, there is an ability for me to create a list of approved email addresses that I can add to our Google admin console. And say, this is an approved list of emails that we will allow our students to email and receive emails from. I can do that, and the way that I would implement that is our families would have to make sure that their Power School profile is up to date. And their pow- Power School information of Guardian one and Guardian two is up to date, and then I can pull that information from Power School and create an Excel file and upload it into the admin console. Excuse me, and I can keep that list updated quarterly, right, so if a parent changes an email, then I can download that information when report cards come out and I can update the list, so we we have that capability, we can do that. Um, it's just a matter of of me being guided by this committee or the school, the entire school committee on what we want to allow or not allow moving forward. I don't feel comfortable making that decision on my own for the entire district, and I would like to make sure that we're all on the same page as we mitigate or or how we control this this matter.
Yeah, hundred percent, the the full school committee should discuss this and with the admin and with you, um, certainly, safety is a priority, and I understand that's what triggered that decision to shut that down. Um, I I think I would love to see it on August sixteenth or the twenty sixth before school starts for that decision to be made. You know, I think Power Schools use six through twelve, right, and that's you know, most of the population that's concerning, although fourth and fifth grade probably is part of that too. So I, how how time consuming would it be to put those approval lists together for for you for Power School?
No, I would only download the information from Power School and create the list from that and upload it, so the time behind that is extremely short, right, because I'm pulling data that's already been there. Whether the information is is updated or not, right, so I can't control what the family puts into Power School. I can I can export information from it all day long, and it won't take long at all. So that part's very quick and seamless and and easy, it's just a matter of making sure that the right information is in Power School, right? So, I mean, that coincides with school messenger and getting those broadcasts out. If that information isn't updated and it's not right, then obviously, I can't control what the outcome is, I can only deal with what I have available to me.
So I think that I I imagine that me and Jess are kind of on the same page here with with middle school kids where I know personally, I, the emailing was a big selling point to me, trying to convince people not to get their kids' phones for sixth grade. So it's been a difficult conversation with people to say, uh, you told me that I didn't need to get, so, and honestly, I feel like the obviously, we have to bring this to the whole school committee, but I I hope people listen, and I hope people aren't getting phones for their soon to be sixth graders, because they they've heard that they can't get in contact with their kids. I feel like there there has to be, I I if if it comes down to having the the pa- parent one, parent two emails uploaded, I I s- I don't even know that it's worth like hashing out right now, because it really needs to be discussed with the whole committee, but um, I we we I think we have to do something, but we also need to make sure that parents understand that they should not be using and the kids also, that they, this is, this is a like, this is a scheduling tool, it's not for bypassing everything else, and that we have software in place that is going to start flagging these things, or they already already was flagging these things, and and maybe it's a matter of following up when we do flag these things to say like, hey, you know, I noticed that your child is, you know, once a week rerouting and asking you to get picked up and because they have a headache instead of going to the nurse and stuff like that, but um, I think this is the selling point for not getting kids' cell phones. And there's so many issues with the bus that, you know, it it, a lot of parents don't use the bus, so when when the practice gets canceled or a game gets canceled, the kid doesn't know whether they should be getting on the bus or calling their parent or emailing their parents to get picked up, and those are time sensitive things, and I don't think it's fair to put it all on the secretary either, to have a million people calling saying, can you please let my kid know? Um, or even like the the table in front of Toronto where it's like you drop off, um, you're not supposed to go into the office if your kid forgets their cleats. Well, if you're, you can put your kid's cleats there, but if they don't know they're there, and you can't email them, they just sit there for days, I've seen stuff sitting there, there were some ski poles there for like a week, but um I think we do need something that allows these types of situations, which I think it gets used for more for than these situations where people are bypassing the the nurse and guidance and all of that, but again, I thi- I say we bring this to the committee as soon as possible.
Yeah. For twenty sixth, or, yeah.
And just keep in mind that, you know, it it was brought up earlier. Just because we have these tools in place, it it still becomes an additional task for someone else to monitor, right, so we have this this aware in place, and um, someone still has to look at all those alerts that come through, and 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 still, someone still has to 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 mitigate which one and prioritize and say, oh, this one's just work, or I need to address this student. Um, so we 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 also have to be respectful to that as well, um, and just to circle back to all of it. It was only implemented and blocked from grade eight down. Um, nine through twelve still had that ability to email outside the domain. And the reason why we we did that was because athletic coaches may not work at the school. Uh, colleges, college emails come from outside the district, um, jobs, they might have given their school email address to their job, so I that was taken into consideration when the blockade was put in place, it was that really that eighth grade in down.
But that's ideally the grade that you don't want to have a phone.
No, I I totally agree, I didn't get my kids a phone until they were riding the bus after school and they were away from an adult, so that's the first time I got my kid a phone, so I I completely respect that.
We have a question, Mr. Parker?
Jason, go for it.
Thanks, I know you don't have like a structured public comment period, but I um, I I one hundred and ten percent fully agree with everything uh, Beth just said, um, we were able to hold off my daughter getting a cellphone until eighth grade. Um, because when she needed it, she was emailing us on her Chromebook, practice schedule change, come pick me up, our game bus is late, or, um, you know, rain delay, postponed game, what, like, all that stuff that she needed to get ahold of us. She had the option to just open up her Chromebook, and therefore, we didn't need to get her her own cellphone to be able to communicate with her. Um, so everything Beth said, fully one hundred percent agreed. Um, I will add a couple additional use cases that I wanna make sure are considered, um, because I think they're incredibly beneficial and useful. Um, to the extent that we're asking our children to use technology in their assignments, writing papers, creating PowerPoint presentations and that kind of stuff. It's very regular that our our daughter was emailing us a link to her Google Doc, or a Google, a link to her slides presentation or whatever. You know, hey, what's your feedback, can you proofread this, or, you know, like he- helping us engage with her and her assignments. Um, so that's another use case beyond just the, you know, let let's hold off kids from getting phones until eighth grade. Um, one bit of feedback I will give, um, about the block to the extent that we're only going to put in either a complete block the way it is now, or we're gonna open it up only to a predefined list of email addresses that came from Power School. Um, one bit of feedback I would offer on anything that is being blocked, that there'd be a bounce message that says the email didn't go through and wasn't delivered. Um, that was the problem we were having with our daughter when the block went into place, and we didn't know that it was in place. She was emailing us, hey, you know, there's some deadline of something I need you to do, and we were never getting her emails. And she didn't know that they were blocked, because she wasn't getting an error message, saying your email couldn't be delivered because it's outside the domain. She didn't, she sent it, she thought we got it, and she thought either we were ignoring her or busy or whatever, and we almost missed the deadline for the thing we need to do for her. So, um, for whatever is going to remain blocked, um, I would ask that you put on the the bounce error message, so that they know they sent an email that did not go through.
I'll take a look on the on the admin console to see if that's something that we can turn on, I know as of right now, it appears it, everything goes through and nothing happens, right, so it kind of just vanishes.
Right, and they think it went through.
Yep. Same thing on both sides, so whether you're sending something in as well, it it appears to go through and it just doesn't it just hits a wall and then falls to the ground and on 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 silent ears, right, so.
Now, for the allow list on Power School, a question, um, would we as parents have the ability to put in both like a personal email address and a work email address, or is it one email address per parent?
I would have to take a look at how the how the export would look, right? I would I would have to see what the export looks like in in how I can pull information, and then I can go from there. I don't know if I can only select two emails, I would have to look to see what the export feature looks like and see what my checkboxes are.
The child will both have to know which email address do I use to reach out to my parent, but the parent will also have to know which email address do I send from to reach my child.
That's right.
Again, the bounce message will help train them to that, but you know, the that'll be helpful if the if there's the opportunity for more than one. Because they may have different rules set up on their phone to say my my work email comes through immediately, but my personal email, I only see if I look at it, you know, different will have different rules on their phones for their notification settings and stuff like that.
Absolutely, I would take that into consideration when I would do that.
Not to put a dimper on this parade, but there are some things we just need to look at, right, that's me and my lens, right, so there not all parents and mom and dad in the same family, right, sometimes, so there's a couple things we have to logistically work out before we roll this out, right? Um, some families don't have you know, are allowed to have access to certain information as well too, so there's a lot of it that we're going to have to put and be careful of. Um, all good to go, we're we're ready, but we we gotta really be paying close attention to who kids get to email. Um, the other part is, we have to just be watchful, because kids come up with some emails that are 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 dummy emails as well too, so all this, we're we're gonna work out once we get the okay from you guys, just to make sure that we're looking at all the logistics of whether parents don't have, both parents don't have all access to information, um, you know, we we ran into this in the previous district I was at, mom and dad are are no longer together, but who's filling out the work on the information on school spring, so all of a sudden, I'm filling it out and it's my new wife as opposed to mom who's not getting the information, so it's all the logistics of stuff like that, we have to we'll have to look into, take into account, after school committee gives us the okay.
Yeah.
Just wanted to think about all that, that's all.
Yeah, no, totally, so I didn't realize the block was only eighth grade and down, so I just throwing it out, that, you know, I feel like definitely we should discuss this as a full committee, um, but either before or after that, to think of it in different blocks, so like, maybe continue that block and only parents fifth grade down and and allow and open it back up for sixth up and then eighth, so, um, but again, so, you know, whatever, August twelfth or twenty sixth, whenever that first meeting is. I would love to discuss this as a full committee and and vote on something, um, because I think it's very important to put this out on beginning of the school year emails as well, like, and maybe even incorporate it into the new technology agreement, like, these are the reasons you can email your kid, do not do it for health reasons, you know, you have to go through the school nurse, you have, you know, so you know, just so for expectations are very clear, you know. So I don't know.
And and like I said, I I I I walk the fence on this, I agree with both sides, um, and I will do as I'm directed, as the school committee directs me to do. And, like I said, I I, right now, the block is only grade eight down, and then nine through twelve, it's it's open. Um, we do have the the email. We we do monitor the emails, so we we do, we have that in place, um, so again, we can we can find tooth comb it however the the committee sees fit, and uh, I will work with whatever solution we come up with.
Thank you, I appre- and I appreciate why it was done, and I understand it, and when you have to make a a snap decision to when you that's why it happened, it wasn't just, obviously, no one's gonna roll something like this out in the last like two months of school unless there was a reason, and there was a reason, and it needed to be done, and but we're gonna try and roll it back as much as we can.
Good point, Beth, thanks.
Um, I know, and we're keeping an eye on the time, because we have another meeting to go to at three thirty, um. So, let's see. So I know, I mean, the cellphone policy is a is another big topic, um, but I just wanted to touch upon it. Um, Lisa Mars said there was some, you know, in the full committee meeting last time, that there were some bills going through. Which I guess, can I put it in the chat? Is there a chat on here?
There is.
Oh, there is, okay, let me max, let me get to grab the link, um, so she had sent me I don't see chat, am I being thick here?
I I do know what you're talking about, I I've, I found it online as well. But, um.
Is there a chat to drop the link in? I don't know, maybe not.
No, maybe not.
Has anything gone through at all, or is it?
No, but they are trying to do it for September.
Really?
Timeline, okay.
So it it seems like, it it sounds like it's, if if it were to go through, this is gonna become a a policy issue, not a not our subcommittee issue, whereas for how, and they're talking bell to bell, and they're, they want it by September.
State or federal, Beth?
State.
Really, okay.
So it, are you looking at Bill H seven twenty or another one?
I can't, I looked it up yesterday.
Okay, because I saw like Bill H seven twenty is was supposed to have a hearing scheduled for six seventeen. And then I don't see anything updated to that, but then there are similar bills. Uh, S three eighty one.
So 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 just while you're looking at that, just know that admin, myself it teaches, everyone would be on board with some sort of cellphone ban, right, we're we're completely on on board with that. It it distracts from what needs to take place. Um, there are some uses for it, we we've talked about this as admin, like, that the 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 cellphone can certainly be a tool for our students. Um, there are some uses for it, we, we've talked about this as admin, like that the, the, the cellphone can certainly be a tool for our, our students. But I gotta tell you, the biggest thing that my colleagues as superintendents are struggling with is the parents. And they, they want their kids to have cellphones. So before, if there's a law that comes through, that would make our job a lot easier. Um, but everybody is saying it's the parents, the parents want their kids and this has become a thing. Um, and so my one recommendation I would make to this subcommittee meeting, and that's what I'm hearing from my colleagues, is some sort of. Google Doc, a survey or something that goes out to parents and say, hey, what are your thoughts on, on banning cellphones are? I, I, I'm, I'm wordsmithed and completely just throwing stuff out there, but some information to parents and getting their input. Cause if they're all on board, that's an easier story to tell. But if seventy-five percent of them are saying we want our kids to have cellphones in school, then it's a different story and a hot, and a, a different audience that we're gonna be talking to, so. My colleagues have all said to me, before you're doing it, then you gotta get parent buy-in and the one thing you do is. Survey them and try to get some information from them and see how they feel about this.
Yeah, I'd love to, um, I, I don't know if that can be incorporated into our, um. Not action plan, our, um, strategic plan. Um, cause there's gonna be surveys going out for that, correct?
That could be a question that's added on to it, um, but maybe, you know, if there's a law that comes through, then this, this work has been laid down for us, right? Um, but if, if not, um, the strategic plan will take all year, I guess my thinking is what's your timeline for, for cellphones? And, and what you're looking at for something like that.
I'd love by September for us to have figured it out, but you know, I think the budget taking up so much time in the spring, I think unfortunately it was pushed back a little bit, so.
I think at some point, and I've talked to other people that. The budget comes up every year, the budget takes up a lot of time every year and this always gets put on the back burner. And at some point, you just have to like, you just have to move forward, because the information is there, the studies are there. This is detrimental to the kids and we need to start doing something. Instead of constantly talking about it, researching it, it, I think. I mean, it would be great if this, this law, if it gets enacted, it takes everything off of us and then it becomes just a policy issue of like. What do we want, where do the phones go during the day, like that, and that, that would be the. Ideal situation, but.
As principals and admin agree, like, we would love that to happen, but our biggest. I don't wanna say roadblock, our biggest hurdle that, and I agree with you, Beth, you sometimes just gotta rip off the Band-Aid, right? And, and ju- sort of like the bus routes we did in Berlin this January, you just sometimes just gotta do it and it, it just happens. Um, I think the same thing happens here, but one of our biggest hurdles, I think, is parents need to buy into this and know that this is what's happening here, right? Because what I'm hearing from some of my colleagues, kids now have two phones, so they have one phone that they're putting in these little sleeves. And parents are, they have another phone, but also we gotta watch the camera watches, cause kids are bringing watches in and so, you know. And then the only other part is the liability of when we're holding on to those phones. Who, who, who's overseeing that, right? So, and making sure that those phones are kept in a safe spot at all times as well too. So small roadblocks, but just stuff we have to think about. But we're, we're supporting this as, as, as admin here.
Yeah, um, I didn't have an opportunity to reach out to Attorney General Office yet, but my, my hope was, you know, similar to. The cyber bullying, I, I think that was the name of the topic, um, for that Wednesday night, um. My hope is maybe that they already have a pre-made video with some of the data that's out there showing the harm for, you know, mental health for. Kiddos under eighth grade, um, and even, you know, above that age, um, and, you know, maybe having a. Community forum with that video by them, by the attorney, Massachusetts Attorney General. Um, you know, I know we mentioned having maybe some other schools, I did reach out to a few other schools, I haven't heard back from them, so I'll follow up on that. Um, I mean, I would love to put a date on the calendar for that, um, but I, I know we're also doing the strategic plan, so I don't wanna. Overwhelm people with that, but maybe part of our strategic plan is changing the community norms, like the wait until eights. And, you know, I know there are parents out there and, you know, one parent came to our last meeting. So I mean, I think the support is out there and, um. So it's.
Maybe, um, what am I related, maybe we can get a survey. Together and then ha- bring it to the first meeting that we have, whether, and see if we can push that out as soon as possible and then. Once that comes out, we tie into a forum and then keep, just keep moving.
I agree, I agree. It, it would be interesting to see how families feel about this, right? And we have to be very strategic in the way you're asking the questions. But, and it's gotta be a quick survey, quick turnaround and have some data, just to know what families are feeling. You know, the majority of families might feel exactly what we're feeling right now, that, then that's an easy thing for us to. I'm not sure if that's, that's really true.
I'd like to think that, but I think you're probably right. But like as soon as we, if we, if we end up having an extra meeting over the summer, if we can, if Jess, if Jess and I can put together a survey and then present it. And try to get that out as soon as possible, I think that, I think getting the survey out will start the ball rolling and then we can start. Get it moving, the sooner we get it moving, the more likely it is to like keep going.
I got some, I got some newsletters going out like the first week in August, right? So I could even put in there like be looking for a survey about cellphones and so then that could, the, the parents stop paying it. I, I lose parents in July, just know that, right? And teachers, no one's checking emails, no one's doing any of that, August, that will all start happening again, so. I, I think it's a great idea, like you start working on like survey, the simpler the better, like, you know.
Yeah, really basic.
Yeah, I agree.
And I, and I think of note too, like if someone's listening to this meeting later on, like. This is outside of five oh four and IEP use, so if a kiddo has, uh, something in their IEP. Or their five oh four that requires their use of their cellphone to take pictures of stuff or, or notes or whatever. Um, that is outside of this policy.
Right, and we have diabetic students that have them and, yeah.
Exactly, but that would, I think, be in a five oh four.
And we're not gonna take the phones away, and, and not like pre-dating this, but we're not taking the phones away from, right? There's a spot like, I, I envisioned the way we used to do it at Veterina, you walked into your math class, all your phones went in this, in this basket or this thing behind the door. The teacher monitors, right? So we don't own those phones all day long, cause the liability would be huge on us, but when you're in math class, you're not, you're not having your phone. When you go to your ELA class, you're not having your phone, right? It's put in a secure spot. That's the simplest, easiest way to implement this, just so you know that.
The state legislation was bell to bell.
What's that?
The state legislation was bell to bell. That's what they're looking for, so we're gonna have to find an alternate plan for where we're going, what, what, what happens. That, and that's a policy thing, I assume, where they have to decide like what, what. Do the kids just not bring them to school, leave them in their lockers, or do we?
So the state law is going, looking for bell to bell? Even better.
Yeah, right, and e- and everyone's doing it, so there's like less. No argument, well, it'll be an argument, but.
It would be just like COVID, right? The, the state finally came out and said, this is what you're doing, we're all making our own individual plans, that was really, we were like on islands here. Until all of a sudden the commissioner and the governor said, this is how we're gonna provide, here are your options for providing education in, in the, in the district. That made it so much easier for us, so if they did this for us, this would be huge.
Right, yeah, it, it's asking a lot of each district to ask them to reinvent their own wheel when. There's an expectation that you should be doing something, well then just tell us what to do.
That's right.
I mean, whole states are doing it, I think New York City did it not too long ago, like, you know, so.
You brought up memories, right? COVID, we're just saying, just tell us what you want us to do, right? We were coming up with all these plans, Jess, tell us what you want us to do and we'll do it.
Yes, but let's not compare those two.
No, please not.
It gets a lot streamlined and there's less argument and like you, you don't have to defend each, your, your particular decision.
Why, why, Boston and Berlin are doing it, but yet West Boston right over the, over the borders, not doing it, I agree.
Yeah, okay, so kind of our action items, I'll just try to wrap up, um, but so Beth and I will work on a parent survey. We'll reach out to see if maybe Attorney General again has something, or maybe some of the other schools had it, um, if we can get them to reply to us, um. And then see if the Mass Attorney General has like a PowerPoint or a little video. Or something that people have used in their, their policy review. Um, and then, you know, something I would like is maybe see if community members wanna explore the wait until eights. You know, so I think you don't really become aware of the issue until your kiddo reaches the age. Like at fifth grade, all these friends are getting phones and then you're like, oh, they're being left out. But, but then it's just a, it's a, it's a disaster of a situation and so I think a lot of elementary school parents. Would benefit being aware of this wait until eighth movement in the community, um, so you learn from. Parents experiences that are ahead of you and, and, you know, chronological age of their children. So, I, you know, I know I have a sixth grader, I have a, you know, well, soon to be seventh grader and soon to be third grader. My third grade is gonna get a dumb phone for sure, or something that does not have smartphone capabilities, so.
Just know that Joe and I will be working, moving forward, um, and working with the union and our principals. Uh, and our teachers and looking to use that September date as professional learning to roll some stuff to our teachers.
Awesome, and do you think for that first week of August, that the, um. Soft opening coming down the road, things with, um, the, uh, securely. Features, maybe, maybe if, Joe, if you feel comfortable that you've gotten ahold of it, that maybe, you know, little. User videos could be added if, if parented, want, parents wanted to explore it before school started. Throwing it out there for you and Al to discuss.
No, it, it would depend, it, it really would depend on how the implementation of it goes on the backend. Um, uh, cause I'd wanna make sure that that was, was how it should be first.
A hundred percent, and, and I don't know if, again, if Al feels appropriate. That maybe the technology agreement could be reviewed for how parents and students use email. Communication between parents and, and I don't, I don't know if there's like a, I don't know. To, you know, use the proper channels of healthcare and school nurse and, you know, administration teacher that. You know, I don't know if that can be looked at.
I feel like the technology agreement would be better, better suited to be signed if they did some kind of an assembly where the kids had a. A discussion about what they were assigning, cause I sign my kids every year.
Just amongst, um, directors that, that I've talked to and, and, and all the things that I'm seeing. Coming out amongst tech directors, uh, they're, they're really trying to move away from an acceptable use po- policy. And they're going more towards a responsible use policy. Um, and, and they're, they're trying to get away from that, that word acceptable and, and move towards responsible. So that, that would be more encompassing.
That, that's not a bad idea, right? So why couldn't we do that? Joe, you and I did that at Veterina, you brought all the kids down, right, sort of read them, uh, uh, there's an expression, it's not appropriate, but. Like, this is what you're doing, this is what will happen, every one of you now sign this, right, and bring it home. And give you, have your parents sign it, and we, we did it with everyone, right?
And then you know that they actually heard.
That's right. And that was a reminder, so remember on September twenty-third, when we brought you down here and you signed this, boys and girls, this is what you signed, right?
And I don't know, like, in the power school, whatever, like, where you sign, or at least how we did it in the past, like, we. Did checkboxes and if you clicked on the link, it would kick you out of that process, or at least on the phone if you were doing it. Um, so I don't know if there's some way to incorporate that document in that scrolling of checking things off. Or, or whatever the process is, so it forces you to actually scroll through it, rather than.
Yeah, almost like a, almost like a terms and condition thing when you're, when you, when you're doing that, you, you have to. Click on it, it opens up another window and then you have to scroll to the bottom and then you have to click accept in order to move on, or otherwise you can't. Yeah, I'll have to look into that, it all depends on how the forms were built. I'm apologizing right now, the, I need to be mindful of the time, cause. Um, we do have that three thirty meeting, so, uh, it's another meeting that I have to start up and make sure that we got properly.
Any last two second comments from anyone?
I just wanted to throw in for the action emails, don't forget, we're gonna, action items, we're going to talk about the email list and whether we're gonna add parent emails.
Yes, yes, approval is Power School, yeah, yeah.
And, and, and what parents have approval to, to be able to get those emails, and who's filling out that form to do that, right?
And which grades are blocked? Okay, all right, I will conclude this meeting at three twenty-six PM, thank you all.